Pull your slack.
Throw on your stuff.
Oh, I think.
We have a leak that's in somebody's shirt.
I am so.
Too much horsepower.
Yes.
Jesse told me don't touch it.
You're bound and determined to break the.
Hey.
Okay, it is still one thirty. It must have been it to fix the microphone. Still one thirty and it's time in our schedule for a planning hearing. We've got four files today. First file is AM zero 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 six dash two two. Second one is AM zero 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 three dash two two. Third one is AM zero zero five two five dash two one. And the last one is MOD zero 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 one dash two two. And before we get going, does anybody have a visual or hearing issue they need some help with? Okay, let's see that. How about conflict of interest?
Commissioner Conley has no conflict.
Commissioner Bradshaw has no conflict.
And Commissioner McDonald.
Keep that screen for a second.
Um, the procedures are on the on the screen. So if you guys want to take a minute to read those, I won't. I won't necessarily read them for you. You can go and read them. And Milton, give us about a minute and then you may start whenever you're ready.
Okay. There.
Take your minute just to get the whole presentation up.
Yeah. So, so this is an amendment adding a file, adding a section to the code called Development Agreements. I just wanted to start with the public comment because it it asked. It the public comment asked that the board table this item until file AM twenty one twenty one could be heard. So that file schedules for May twenty fifth. The the letters continue to state that the development agreement is completely voluntary for developers. Unlikely developers will enter any into any agreements that reduce their profits. And then there was one letter in the file requesting that that the file be sent back to or sent to the planning commission for their review and recommendation prior to the board's decision. I thought if the board wanted to act on any of those right now, we could address it now and save you from listening to the next twenty pages of my boring presentation.
Now, I see what you're doing.
So.
What do you guys?
Well, for me, I was. I don't really have that much problem kicking the kicking it down the road. But I think that we need sadly enough, go through the process and hear it. And I've got questions and some of them. Quite a few. And then, you know, if I don't feel like it's met what I intended when I tried to get this forward. And then, you know, I think we can then address that at that time. Okay, very good.
Onward to the fog.
Okay.
So in the last several years, there've been reasonable requests that allow for several permitted uses in a new zone. So or in the new on the new property. So first, for example, a rezone from residential to rural service center, commercial or industrial. When you look at those use tables, a rural service center is going to allow more uses than a residential zone is going to allow. Or a commercial zone. There's there's lots of permitted uses in a commercial zone. And so when you when you rezone a property from residential to commercial, it opens up a whole array of possible uses on that property. By not having a development agreement in place, it doesn't allow the board to address the possible impacts that that rezone may incur in the future that 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 may need to be addressed sooner than later. And so that that's the purpose for this. For this request from state statute sixty five sixty five eleven, seven sixty five eleven A Development Agreements says that the board may permit as a condition of rezoning that the owner make a written commitment concerning the use or development of the subject property. So when somebody comes in and asks for a rezone, even from a AF twenty to an AF ten or a rural ten to a rural five, there they there's certain impacts that that may become present during the review. The board may put together a development agreement and require that a development agreement be put together to address the possible impacts of that rezone. The interesting thing or the good thing about this agreement is that it is a board approved document. It can only be changed by the board. It does not terminate when if the property were to sell, it goes with it moves on to the next set of owners. If the development agreement is not fulfilled within a reasonable time as determined by the board or upon failure of the board, that the commitment can be terminated and the zoning can be reversed back to its original zone. So it it offers the opportunity for the board to negotiate again how these impacts can be addressed moving down the road. So. Uh, I'm not going to run through the whole development agreement. You have a copy of it. The Publix had a copy of it. This is the table of contents. For for that, you can see in the table of contents that it addresses all the things in the statute that we just that we just reviewed. And then the I did want to read the purpose statement that is in there two eighteen A. Overtyped. Conditional zoning development agreements are a discretionary tool that may be used by the board as a condition of rezoning. Conditional zoning development agreements allow a specific project with a specific use to be developed on one or more parcels located in an area that's not currently zoned for the proposed uses. Like I just can't emphasize again enough the the importance of this type of a document. This county, the zoning and the way the zoning is laid down is there are not many commercial uses that are allowed in a recreation or a residential zone. And so you have these large areas that that maybe somebody wants to have a corner store. And it's just not allowed in in the current zoning and the way it's laid out. So so the development agreement may allow for would allow for if somebody came in for a rezone for that specific corner, then the board could look at there's certain things that need to be done in order for that zoning change to occur. It just it just allows the board more tools to to operate with. Sixty five eleven allows the county to impose conditions on a rezone with a development agreement adopted by the board. It's a contract between the land developer and the county addressing possible impacts. It's not designed to promote growth, but to promote the fact that impacts are to be addressed with new growth and developments. So it sure it ensures the county has a way to follow through with promises made by an applicant for a zone change. Oftentimes when folks apply for a zone change, they'll say, hey, this is what we're going to do. This allows the board to lock in those commitments. Milton, before you get too far. Yeah. I I don't know if you were going to stop and take a breath somewhere in this, but I just. The biggest clarification I need is this is only when it comes to rezone or anything like that. This isn't a development agreement for like for an applicant for just. No, I mean that for a. Conditional use or a subdivision. It is not. This is. Why wouldn't it be? Why wouldn't it go over into subdivision two? I mean, why wouldn't we use this tool as something that could cover the subdivision? So it's already there. In the subdivision code, it's already there. Yeah. When when sub divider comes in and wants to, you know, develop into more than four lots, you know, five to whatever. They their project gets reviewed for road standards and other possible impacts. If they're going to install sewer and water, those those public improvements get reviewed for. And there's and there's a there's a part in the subdivision code that says that they have to. That the applicant has to either put those public improvements in prior to final plat where they have to bond for those improvements. And and then they can get their final plat. And so sometimes you'll see a developer or a landowner, for heaven's sakes, will will want to split a property into twelve lots. He'll have to put in roads. He'll have to. He may have to put in water and sewer lines. Those public improvements are reviewed for the an engineer cost estimate is made. They have to bond for a hundred and fifty percent of that of those projects of that project. So how did we get in trouble with the pavement then when we on a couple of those that we they volunteered to do? So the problem came because in the in the zoning ordinance that was adopted, there was a statement in the actual ordinance that said the developer basically shall. It mandated that they had to pave the roads when they came for any type of land division. And it shouldn't have been. It shouldn't have been in the ordinance for the zone change. It it was addressed at the subdivision stage when when the applicant came in and applied for a subdivision. He he put in paved roads and he actually paved the roads prior to final plat. But you could have required that.
Well, Jeff, this is Bill Wilson for the record here. I'm prosecutor. We essentially shortcut this process in that, I think, because we everybody wanted to make that a condition of the rezone, but we need this ordinance to be in place in order for us to do that. Uh, so that is that was the the problem. And I think it was always intended to be like a rotational amendment, a suggestion. And it was actually in the process of converting it to that final ordinance, it was was adopted as a shall. And we didn't have the authority to do it without the without something like what we're looking at now. And part of the part of the.
But we could have picked it up if we wouldn't have put you have to do it. That was where the.
It would have been, but it would have had no binding effect. So if it would have been nothing more than just a.
We really. Notational recommendation.
Notational recommendations.
What it was.
And so what Milton's trying to get at here is that if we adopt something like like this proposal, we get to make that mandatory. And if they don't do it, then the zoning decision is conditional and can revert back to the previous, whatever it was before. And this has also been in response to, you know, we had a lot of public criticism of the rationale that we've used in the past that on this at that rezone stage that we recognize that we have the ability to make particular requirement at the subdivision stage. So we send. So we we reference that during the during deliberation and say, we can't handle this now. We can't make the requirement for paving now, but we know that we'll be able to do it later. And people have not been happy. This is in large part a response to those criticisms because it'll allow us to actually do what people were asking for.
Right, because we have no. We have no idea the impact. We have no idea what they're actually doing, other than the fact at that point, they're just looking for a rezone.
Right. So this would actually, you know, if we enacted this, this ordinance would allow the planning staff to take a deeper look at not just the rezone on in a vacuum, but look at the the totality like the corner store scenario that you just mentioned. And say, well, we think that a a rezone for that use is appropriate here. But we want to make sure that it's limited to that. That's the condition. We don't want to just open the doors entirely because without the agreement in place, we can't get those can't get those cows back in the barn after we've approved. That makes sense?
Kind of, but it sounds like we can pick it up at the the other end. I I don't know. It it it's frightful because it doesn't seem like it carries through to the subdivision process. Well, of course it does because what was interesting about the case that we keep talking about is that the applicant was in favor of paving the roads. That was always part of his plan. So he didn't care. He he didn't care. He he wanted to move forward. It matched it. But for when we look at the 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 standards for a rezone and and now we're starting to look at it even more in depth of the potential impacts, right, the impacts to services. And so by having the development agreement, it allows us to make you you know, make those things be addressed. If somebody came back, if 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 a somebody came in, an agency came in and said, hey, this is going to seriously impact this intersection or this is going to seriously impact this road, you know, road and bridge, then you have a tool. The board has a tool that. Yeah, this needs to be fixed.
What you're planning to do.
Right. Do a deep dive into. Well, and it's going to continue to push that that whole idea of why is this? Why are you doing this zone change? What is it for? What are your plans? This is gonna. This is a tool that goes along with that idea. So explain the voluntary thing. We've been getting beat up about that part pretty heavily by mostly Dave, but some other people too. So so. I'm just calling you out. So voluntary. It's simple. If if you do this, then we'll grant the rezone. It's up to you. That's.
It's voluntary from our side.
From our side.
So you could it the volunteer. It's it's a contract. It's essentially it is a contract, right? That's in us at its most basic. And and you need two two parties to agree to any contract, of course. But we would if we chose to utilize this tool, it would be done such a way to say, you know, we're saying that we would potentially, you know, find that this rezone, a conditional rezone, would be in accordance with the comprehensive plan if it were subject to these limitations that we're telling you about now. Now, if it's your choice whether or not you want to enter into that agreement with us. If you don't want to, you can still just file for the the rezone on its own, you know, the operating just like an ordinary one would be. But staff might recommend denial of that rezone because they don't think that unfettered use of that property under the under the new zone would be in accord, might not be in accordance with the plan. So it's it's voluntary on the county's part. Now, the the applicant doesn't have to accept it, but if we're offering that to them and they refuse, then it's it increases the likelihood that staff would recommend. And if you guys chose to follow their advice, that it would also result in the denial of the application.
Well, I think it would also help resolve the issues with, and we're probably almost as simple as we want to deliberate or deal with the issues we've seen with a couple of these files. We're trying to determine what impact is. We have no idea if there's going to be a development or what the development is. You know, or how or how it's supposed to look. And I think that gives us a a sneak peek. Then we can actually start talking about conditions in advance.
Without this ordinance, you may actually want to grant a rezone with limitations that you feel are reasonable. But right now you don't have. You either have to vote it up or down. Just all or nothing. And this could actually give you another a tool to to limit your approval for things you may not you may not like, but but kind of to split some hairs. Give you more more ability to do that. Milton, is that.
And and it makes a rezone condition.
For something pretty simple and not complex and maybe just a one off split or something like that, then you don't have to require. Yeah, this likely not a. Okay. I think I knew a lot of that, but trying to get it out there. I wanted to include in the presentation a little bit some of the some of the Givens personally comments on the history of this. It was developed and promoted by the Association of Idaho Cities, which explained that it would facilitate contract zoning, allowing governments to require commitments from developers before approving a zone change or a rezone. So the legislative history further explains that legislation employed contracts to ensure commitments made by one developer would carry over to subsequent owners of the property. So so that's also really important key to this tool is that it doesn't go away if they sell the property. It stays in place and and subsequent owners are bound by that agreement. So the board still has the ability to back out of it if they chose to or if they saw that this was not progressing. Like they said, you can apply timelines. The difference between this and the subdivision agreement is that the subdivision agreement is tied to actual design work. This is this can still be tied to speculation to some degree, right? And there's no money tied to this. With the subdivision, there is money tied to that. They have to put up a bond or they have to put up a cash surety for those improvements. This allows them to still consider all of the different things they want to do and and then move forward that way.
And if you back and if you back out of it, then this then the zone change becomes moot and it reverses back to the.
Yep. But it.
That's why it's called.
That's why it's conditioned.
Right.
There there is money involved because more than likely they're going to have to prove or mitigate any possible. You know. Sure, you have to do the studies, right? Right, they're going to put some money, but they're going to do that probably anyway at the next level. Yeah, the money will come in. Yeah, but they but it would still allow for those studies to be done as well. Okay. So just again, I think that it's an excellent tool. His staff has reviewed this and reviewed the history of this, the potential to. And I and I understand that by talking about this topic, it appears that the county is is in favor of growing and and I think this type of a tool should show that the county is actually in favor of of mitigating impacts and addressing concerns as growth ideas come into the county.
You thought you were going to use smart growth.
I, yeah, that's that's tied to a an outside a project. But I'm not involved in it. So as we went through, was the other interesting thing in the analysis of this is we went through the staff went through the comprehensive plan and you look at the goals and policies that that are in the comprehensive plan. It's just it's really impressive how the the comprehensive plan talks about how impacts should be taken into account. And through all of the goals and policies, there there was at least a goal or policy in every component except for housing that that could be addressed with this agreement. And so you know, proposed developments shall not adversely impact local school districts. I mean, if we find if if we find that a a zone change is going to be large enough that it's going to cause an impact, it can be addressed here. So and and it just continues. I I wanted to put them all in here and so that's why it's so small. But it just it gives it gives the board a tool that that would help to plan for changes as folks consider options for their land. There's lots of people that talk about what can be done and how it can be done. This just gives a better tool for for the county to use in considering these zone changes.
Good. Any questions for Milton?
That's it? Yeah. That's just that one section.
Milton, wait. So the so the it talked about it in the original comp plan, but we never had the vehicle to actually.
Well, it talked about considering impacts and considering.
So this gives us a better vehicle.
It's not that we couldn't consider it. It's.
Always consider it.
We just didn't have any.
You may not be able to.
Do anything about.
Yeah. Or you can't just deny a file if you felt like the impact was too severe. Whereas.
Without having any information what the actual.
Perhaps, yeah. Whereas under this new paradigm, we might be able to highlight propose like adverse impacts that would otherwise torpedo a file and say, we're willing to, you know, work on this file if you agree in advance that you're going to provide X. You know, you're going to do that. That would be the conditional.
Complete water study. And and there may. There may be a time that that that's appropriate. Absolutely. There may be a time that that needs to be done.
Yeah. So with no further questions, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Okay.
I was hoping to abuse him, but.
The day's not over yet.
Yeah.
We still got three more shots at it.
So let's see. Why don't we go? Is anybody that wants to go ahead and run this the normal way? Anybody want to speak in favor of this, creating this development agreement? Anyone neutral that wants to speak? Do you have anybody in line?
Yes, some people online. No one can.
Okay, anybody opposed which should speak?
Do we have a sign up sheet?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
Let's go online first until we get the sign up sheet. John, uh, make sure you identify your name for the record and you got three minutes.
Hi, this is Johnna Plant Segal. I just worry about the abuse. Um, this going to be the good old boys club. I don't like the situation where you can have two different people ask for zone changes and one could have conditions and the other one could not. Again, it has. We need something that's black and white. That's why I highly recommend waiting for the future amendment on the KBCR amendments coming up. It need. We need things that are in our documentation that's black and white and not something that you guys get to change your mind left or right, depending on which way or how well you know somebody or what direction. I I like the way this was going at first, but I definitely don't like it now, listening to how you can change different change your mind and put different conditions on different land. And it may be the exact same zone change. I just absolutely don't like it. I'm absolutely against it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Who's next? Susan?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, Susan Bowman. I live in Selly Valley and I am against this amendment. First of all, Key Bunner County Rural has over three thousand people that have signed our petition that is asking you to stop the rubber stamping of the higher density residential development. And there's no law that says you have to allow higher densities. You're making the choice to do so. The issue is we see it is not mitigating the impacts of that higher density growth is to stop that higher density growth and respect the people's vision of this county to keep it rural by maintaining the larger lots. This code amendment doesn't do that because you have not thus far listened to the people. We wrote an amendment to the zoning code as a path forward that follows the people's vision and our amendment is lawful. The Key Bunner County Rural Amendment was submitted on November fourth of last year when we submitted that first amendment, we felt an urgency to stop the rezoning to higher densities. So we initially skipped the Planning and Zoning Commission because the code does in fact allow that. But some of our members made the very good point that in skipping the P and Z, we would have been skirting the process that allows the people to speak on this important issue. So we listened and we reversed that decision and asked that our amendment be taken first through the whole process so that the P and Z and the people could weigh in, even though the zoning code does not require that step. That proved to be a very good decision because we went through two workshops with the P and Z and received excellent feedback from them and the community. We incorporated all of that feedback, including a suggestion by Matt Lynn Scott, who is obviously representing developers. We also included the suggestions made by Bill Wilson and we created a better amendment. You submitted your code amendment on March twenty third of this year, nearly five months after ours. You decided to skip the voluntary public process of going through the planning commission. And then you put your amendment before ours. This is not good governance and it doesn't give the people a voice beyond three minutes, which is not enough. A workshop would be more appropriate. We are asking you to table your amendment today if for no other reason than to be fair. KBCR's was submitted first and we have the people behind us. Yours was submitted much later and did not go through the entire public process available in the code. Of course, you can just say that you are quote following the law and that would be correct. But you would also be following the people and the law by tabling your amendment and taking it back to the planning commission, doing some workshops, hearing ours first. It is your sworn duty to act on behalf of the people and not just on the behalf of some property owners seeking higher density. So again, we ask that you hear our amendment on May twenty fifth because we submitted it first and that is the fair thing to do. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Anybody else?
There's another.
Another Susan? Is it Drumheller? Is there another Susan there that's got her hand up?
Yep, Susan Drumheller, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, Susan Drumheller Segal Idaho. And I am actually, I think I'm neutral on this because I just haven't really had time to uh, study this and examine it and 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 I was I was one of the people who wrote a letter urging you to send this to the planning commission. And I, you know, because I think it needs more thought and vetting and, you know, the the way it works right now, the staff report doesn't come out until a week before your hearing and you. And you basically have that day to study the staff report. And, um, provide your comments and your written comments prior to a hearing. So that's really not much time for people to analyze this. And when Title 12 was adopted by the commission in 2008, it required a public hearing for any amendment codes. Um, and it required a public hearing before the planning and zoning commission. This is what it said. It said, the regulations restrictions and boundaries set forth in this title may from time to time be amended, supplemented. Or repealed, provided however, that no action be taken until after a public hearing. By the planning and zoning commission at which parties in interest and citizens shall have the opportunity to be heard. And the hearing must be advertised at least two weeks in advance. So then ordinance 550 adopted in 2016 under the current planning administration. Changed the rule and eliminated the required review by planning and zoning commission. And this change was opposed by project seven B and was made without any review of the planning and zoning by the planning and zoning commission. Um, and there was only 48 hours notice given to the public. And so this, the change was made of this code in violation of the code at the time. And as a result, the planning and zoning commission chairman, Steve Temple resigned in protest. And he took the matter to court, asked for judicial review, but the court declined to hear the case. Saying that Mr. Temple was not personally harmed. But I would argue that everyone is harmed when the legislative process is short circuited. And and that's why I urge you to send this back to the. Planning commission and and I think, um, you know, Susan made some really good points. I was at the last workshop on their, um. Code amendment and I thought it was really positive and I learned a lot and, um. I just, I just think that this, this proposal will be better and it will also. You know, give people a little, you know, maybe restore some public involvement and confidence in the county's land use planning processes. If you send it through the, um, planning commission and after all, you created the planning commission to review amendments. And to work on the comp plan amendments as well and update, so. Um, I really do hope you let it have the longer, uh, review process. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Susan.
Commissioners, real quick, Milton Allerton for the record, let me just correct the comment made that, uh. That this was done by current planning staff, it was not. That change was done in 2015 with the previous planning administration. We did not, the current staff did not propose that text amendment that changed the code in 2015. We were not here at the time.
Well noted, thanks, Milton. Anyone else online?
Nobody else online with their names.
Dave?
So this seemed to me like, it's a little bit like gun control laws, right? It's, it looks to me like feel good. Stuff in the code that's gonna appear to address the issue of, uh, individual zone changes and their impact on services and infrastructure. But. It's all optional and you, the, you already have as a governing board, very broad discretion. Uh, per Lupa, I think it's six, probably sixty seven, sixty five, eleven, this thing that we addressed in the last hearing. Uh, where you are required. In this rezone process to pay particular attention or to give particular attention to impacts on services and I think infrastructure too. So you already have that tool in your toolbox that you can use. And if an applicant gets denied because of impact, uh, that's not being addressed and well, they can always reapply. So, you know, this is, to me, looks like a solution in search of a problem. Uh, and it is op, it's, it's all voluntary and optional. So we go to 218B, uh, agreement may be initiated with a consent, with the consent of the applicant. Uh, blah, 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 and then it gets down to condition four as required by the board. So how can it be as required by the board and also with the consent of the applicant? And Bill, you said that if the applicant doesn't. Uh, agree to it, that, that then maybe, right? This thing I already talked to you about, it's, it's maybe and might all the way through this thing. So where are the teeth in it? Maybe denied at the discretion of the board, but. The, the board, you know, and and also if staff recommends, but when does staff ever recommend a denial of a zone change? I don't think I've seen one. I mean, there might be one occasionally, but it'd be pretty rare.
There's quite a few that they just never make it past staff.
Well, that would be great, but so, uh, so an agreement shall be in the form required by the director. No agreement shall be accepted by department, which does, does not include the following. An affidavit by the owner of the parcel agreeing to submission to use and property of an agreement. Upon the adoption of an order by the board approving requested zone change of the parcel. Every clause in 218F is qualified with the word may. May means it's optional. Uh, we go on 218J, says the board may terminate an agreement if the owner does not perform according to agreement. But Lupa in sixty seven, sixty five, eleven says. If a governing body reverses its zone change decision, I think this is four D. Within four years, the applicant will have standing in the courts. And I would say after, if they wait after four years, well, they've probably already spent money developing it and that's gonna end up being a taking. So it doesn't look so good to me. Uh, and then staff says the development agreement does not guarantee the granting of a rezone. The applicant is not required to accept the terms of the rezone. Development agreement, however, failure to adjust the impact from a zone change will only prove to negate the zone change request. I, that sentence doesn't even make sense to me. And if, if it. Means what it seems like it probably is meant to mean, where's the supporting language for that? If I'm wrong about that, I'll stand corrected, but I can't find it. So it seems to me apparent that this amendment was probably submitted to counter ours. Uh, AM two, zero, zero, two, one, two, one from last November, uh. With the now disbanded P and Z and our amendment more affirmatively addresses concerns put forth by the people regarding individual rezones. So aside from addressing deficiencies already outlined, I'm gonna ask that you table this until after hearing ours on May 25th, thank you. Uh, Dave Moerman for the record, I don't think ever said that.
Thanks, Dave. Anyone else wish to speak out in opposition? Sure. Yeah, I call support, oh, you need to pay more attention.
Sorry, too late.
Go ahead.
Uh, Jeremy Graham, professional planner, owner of Whiskey Rock Planning and Consulting for the record, uh, resident of Sandpoint. Um, you know, this is, uh, I appreciate all these citizen planners that are expressing concerns and. Um, issues that they potentially see, but this is a very customary tool used in almost every jurisdiction that allows it. Um, you said that, not me. Um, so, uh, the, you know, a use case is you, you know, under Euclidean zoning, you have your zoning district that allows a broad range of uses. You may see some, uh, requests that you actually are open to, uh, considering a zone change. But with that might come a bunch of uses that are really not appropriate or concerning to residents. So this tool can also be used to stipulate the type of development that's gonna happen as part of that zone change. And it's actually, I, I view it as a, a, a very, um, uh. Good way to protect the intent of the developer and how the developer could die or the property owner could sell. I mean, the zone change goes forever, so these, these types of agreements are bound to successors and to the property. And and can really protect, um, you know, the intent at the original, uh, zone change application. So, uh, I, I, I think it's pretty mundane and pretty typical anywhere you look that these, these tools are used. So I, I would say it's a good thing.
And you said, if you want to stand on the chair to take a picture, that's fine as well. You don't have any, no walking on the furniture rules in here, although Jesse may differ, but.
Sign up next week.
Yeah. Anyone else wish to, uh, actually speak for or against? No, let's go back for rebuttal.
Hey, Milton, can I?
Sure.
One issue.
Sure, please.
Brought up on that. The portion of sixty five, eleven that says after a rezone has been put in place, there's a certain amount of time after which the board cannot go back and readdress that. That's from sixty five, eleven. Conditional rezones are sixty five, eleven, A, they're the statute or the section immediately following that. And and those speak directly to the conditional nature of the reason. So those are two separate, what, what that time limitation, in my opinion, is only directed at those freestanding zone changes that we're all accustomed to now. So if you did come through and there wasn't a conditional rezone attached to it, then yes, four years would have to pass before the board could even consider. Going back and looking at the zone there. But if, if it's conditional rezone, then we're in sixty five, eleven, A, and we follow the rules there. Okay, so I wanted to answer that question. And I, I, I can actually speak to one other point. I'm an advocate for this. I actually was one of the, I don't know, I worked on it together, but I was an advocate that we do this. And this was in response to something that Commissioner Conley had, had been driving at for, well, I don't know how long.
Couple of years.
Couple of years. Um, so the, the actual, this, this language, if you're, if you're from Coopie County, where you're familiar with their code. It will look familiar to you. We didn't reinvent this wheel. We, we shamelessly stole this from our neighboring county because it appears to be working very well for them. So, Dave, this wasn't in response or trying to one up anything that K B C R has done. It's been in the works now for a very long time.
You probably said it a lot nicer than I would because I, this was not personal, for heaven's sakes.
Yeah, and I.
This was an opportunity.
Well, the timing.
I think that, I think that, yeah, there's. Some sort of a statement that, you know, this was done in some sort of a. Behind the scenes by, in the dark of night and all this other stuff. Bill and I have been discussing this for quite some time and, and I said. Um, why don't we just look at what some of the other counties are doing, whether it's comp plan or whether it's this. If there's somebody out there that's done it and that is having success with it and, and I consider success. Coopin County because it's been, I think, challenged once and, and they, they won. Um, to me. What, you know, I mean, we're not, we're not the first county or first, uh, you know, there's tons of cities that have these. The city of Priest River has one where I came from and it works well, so, um.
Me personally, the biggest driver of my push for this type of agreement was all the, all of the public hearings that we sat in together. And and we heard public criticism of the rationale. That, you know, we're not gonna consider that, that. Concern at this level because we can address it at the subdivision stage, so we have a portion of our code that's designed for that. Or content with that. And there's still not. Want to be able to come to these rezones and and be able to voice those concerns and think that the board has, is able to. To tackle them. And I feel like there was a disconnect between. Some of the valid concerns that were being brought up in some of these hearings and the county's ability to, uh, address them. So this. You know, we start to implement this.
Yeah, we've been highly criticized.
But, Milton, do you have anything more for rebuttal?
Nope.
So then I would still close by the comment.
I rest. It, it, for me, it's, it's difficult to sit here and 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 think that. We've been highly criticized for year after year for not having something similar in place. Why aren't you addressing this? Why aren't you doing this? This was, this was something that was brought forth because of those. Concerns, so we're trying to find a way to, to fix it, right? Everybody's bitching because they don't like the way it is, so we bring a, we bring something forward. Now everybody's bitching because they don't like what we brought forward. It, it's really hard for me to understand really what people want these days. I, I just, I'm just shocked by the, you know, the disconnect between what the, I mean. We, we push something out there and then it's like, oh no, you should have done it like this. We go that way, oh, you should have done it different. You, you know, I mean, at some point, it's, it's pure politics, which is no way to, um. Run a county, in my opinion, and it pisses me off.
Not selection here. Um, so. One of the things is, as Jeff said, as and as Bill talked about. That became an issue as we looked at, I mean, and it became an issue with the minor land division. With, before we fixed the, before we fixed that ordinance and that was prior to Jeff and I coming on. Um, it's always, how do you determine impact? How do you, how, how can you force a landowner to say pave a road or create a road that's gonna serve lots, especially when they're trying to do. Contiguous, um, MLDs, we were able to fix that, but even so much as the file we heard last week, the reconsideration, it was all about impact. Well, how do you actually know what the impact's gonna be unless you have a good idea of what the development may or may not be? And in my opinion, it's always better to have more information when you're considering a decision. Than to have less information. Now, the vacuum we lived in before, it was always, well, how can we even look at this during a, when it's own change? We won't know this until we actually get to the point where we see something from them when they go for B L Ps or a subdivision or whatever. And we'll take it up then, but Lupa does say we have to consider that. So if I'm having to consider something with no tangible evidence of anything, it makes it very difficult and it makes it difficult on all the agencies. So, which they've actually voiced, um, voiced that as well. So if we have this agreement, then we can say, here is the plan. Based on this plan, tell us what you believe the impact would be on schools, on roads, on, you know, what have you. To me, this is just logical, let alone the fact that it's done just about everywhere, except for here. And, and as Jeff said, this is in direct response to K B C R. And the complaints they've levied on other issues, that, you know, you, you got, you gotta look at impact, you gotta look at impact. And we're going, look at impact of what? It's lines on the ground in a, in a zone change. It's lines on the ground, it's not houses, it's not buildings, it's not a new sewer treatment plant, it's not a new warehouse. It's nothing, it's just lines on the ground. So why not have this development agreement so we can actually get a general idea of what the plan is going forward? Let alone the fact that this now locks that land up for that plan. If that developer says, well, listen, I'm gonna go along with this, I'm just gonna sell, or that landowner. And it carries on to the next person, they're gonna have to live by that same agreement. So I would think that those making the noise against this should be championing this thing and going, yeah, let's move forward. And again, to repeat, um, we've been talking about this for years. For absolute years, it has nothing to do with K C B R's deal, nothing whatsoever, and it's just a ridiculous plan to even start with. Um, this has been a conversation, if anybody's been coming here for the last probably three years, we've been wrestling with this, this same issue. As to how do we figure out what the actual impact is and we don't know what the, what the plan is? Um, to me, this really takes away the mystery.
I mean, it's. I actually hired an outside law firm to write one and the thing they wrote was just garbage.
Right.
You threw it out.
And we realized that everyone else is doing it, we just, we can steal one of theirs. Steve, you got anything?
Yeah, I think you'll find this in more than just Coopie County.
Right, right.
Most, most larger counties will have this. Uh, I can't see why anybody that has come to this board in the last four years. Would look at this and think this is not a good idea because now if John Doe says, well, I wanna bust my hundred acres into ten, ten acre tracts. Okay, file for your application. Why are you doing this? Well, because I want ten tens instead of one, one hundred. Okay, we may or may not approve it. Well, because I'm gonna sell ten acre mini ranches. Okay, well, now we want a commitment from you exactly how you're gonna do that, how it's gonna be developed, what's the impact? How's it gonna impact our roads, sewer, water, roads, all that? So why would anybody be against that? That's what you've been screaming for, for years. And now you've got it and now you don't like it. So, uh, it, it makes it easier. For the commissioners, it makes it easier for planning and zoning. And it also gives insurance to the people of the community that if something is gonna be developed. Now it's gonna be looked at very closely and scrutinized and they are gonna have to meet some certain standards in order to go forward. Or they can leave it like it is, so it's strictly up to them, but at least gives us the authority. To say, if you're gonna do that, this is what we want. And so, once you get that commitment. They're, they're past the point of, uh, doing something different unless they go, you know what, we're just not gonna do it. Which is fine too, but it, it gives us. A way to control what y'all have been wanting to control. Uh, you can't stop gra, growth, I can't tell Dave, no, you can't sell off part, part of your property to somebody. I don't have that authority. But we can look at how small he's gonna shave off and sell and then what the impact of that is. And that's what my understanding is what you want. And so if you actually read it. It's a good thing. So.
No further deliberation, I'll go ahead and motion.
So I just wanna. Touch on the kicking that, you know, until after, um, there is a third, the Key Far County Rural, um. You know, I mean, this is, we haven't had this in place for years. Is it gonna matter if we move it back until after there's a third? Probably not, I mean, I don't see that as being a huge issue. Um, but I, we have been taught in the past by experience. But when we don't adopt this and somebody sees that this is what we're going to do, probably. It becomes very problematic and the way it becomes problematic is, is. problematic is, is people are like, yeah, I want to get in and try to get mine done, or at least signed up for it before this is adopted. And we've seen that. And we know that.
Yeah, minor land division.
And if we kick that down the road.
That's what would be my biggest fear.
Then, uh, let's say Scott's planning to do a development, and he sees this coming. He'll go file his application soon as we're done here. And it'll be going by the law that was in place at the time he filed his application.
I will say, gentlemen-
So now you allowed him to get under the wire.
We've learned, we've learned the value of a moratorium from the last time. I mean, you guys might not approve it, but given how people do try to sneak in the door as it's closing, if we ever had that possibility again, I might be a little more prone to recommend a moratorium. But you're right, we can avoid that, like that unpleasant process by, by taking it up now.
Well, the minor land division closing that loophole was a classic example, because we were ready to do it.
We brought it to everybody's attention.
Project 7B said, no, you need to wait. And then, boy, it just opened the floodgates. We got all these minor land divisions with contiguous properties. And everybody was complaining about that. But if we wouldn't have been stopped, we would have done it when we originally tried to do it. We wouldn't have had that issue.
Good point. I guess, yeah, it's a reasonable point.
That's okay.
Because now you've warned them. It's coming. You put it off, they'll-
So the other thing is, is I guess, I'll ask this to Bill, is like, so their text amendment comes forward. I haven't looked at it because it hasn't been in front of us yet. That, what is this, what does one have to do with the other? I mean, so, so this is adopted and, and then we hear theirs and we're like, yeah, yeah, I like that, too. What, what's the possibilities? What does it do? Yeah, you might be able to, Bill. I don't care.
So it, it-
If, if their text amendment's adopted by the board, this would actually complement it. Because, because it, it furthers, it furthers some of that. So-
Furthers the government control.
Well, it furthers that, you know, we, we want to know what you're going to do with your property. We want to know the reason for the zone change. We want, we want to know what the future plans are. When you apply for a rezone, this, this complements that whole idea. Again, I, you know, I'm not the planner on that project. I don't know how it's going to come forward to you. But you'll get it here in a week. It goes before you in a couple of weeks. So it's not like it's, in a pretty much a way, it's like two weeks.
Another way of putting that is that they're not mutually exclusive. It's not one or the other. KBCR's amendment talks about restricting approval of rezones. Again, like as Dave has mentioned, this is, this is a voluntary thing. And so if those two pieces of legislation could be adopted and exist in our code without conflict, if anything, if that, if your amendment was, or KBCR's amendment was approved, it would reduce the number of rezones that get sought. But the ones that are applied for, they could still either use this process of conditional rezoning or not. It would just be, I think that, there, your code section would apply kind of at the front end, and then this would still be applicable to those that still came through the door. So I think, they don't necessarily, they're not, they're not in, in direct conflict with each other, in my opinion. I, I'm, reasonable minds could disagree, but that's my, I'm worried.
Are you? Thanks, Bill. Okay. Anybody want to offer a motion, or we want to talk about this more?
You're trying to get through it.
No, we're having fun, yeah. I move to approve this project filed AM 0006-22 to amend Title 12 Bonner County Revised Code, adding Section 218, conditional zoning development agreements as presented or amended in this hearing, finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of Bonner County Comprehensive Plan as enumerated in the following findings, a fact, and conclusions of law, and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared, testimony received at this hearing, I further move to adopt findings, a fact, and conclusions of law as set forth in the staff report. And direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion, have the chairman sign, and transmit to all interested parties. This action does not result in the taking of private property.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Roll call vote.
Voice out.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, man.
Okay, motion passes, and we will retire this file and move on to AM 000.
Ordinance.
Oh, sorry, my bad.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve an ordinance of Bonner County, Idaho, the number to be assigned citing its authority and providing for amendment of the Title 12 Bonner County Revised Code as presented or amended in this hearing and provided, providing for a publication and an effective date.
I would second that.
Motion to second, roll call.
Voice out.
Aye.
Aye.
Now, we can move on to-
So much pressure that Jenna has put on me, you know, to try to read a little better, like, just, man.
Staff may begin whenever they're ready.
Commissioners, good afternoon. Daniel, Brett, planning staff, for the record. We're here to discuss a map amendment from ag forest land and rural residential to just rural residential this afternoon. So Bonner County Revised Code 12-216 allows staff and governing bodies to review the particular facts, answer circumstances of each proposal submitted, and determine whether there's adequate evidence that the proposal is in accordance with the general and specifics, specific objectives of the comprehensive plan. The applicant is requesting a map amendment for ag forest land and rural residential to rural residential. This parcel has a split land use designation. Request was evaluated against land use designation for ag forest land and rural residential. So this is the definition of those two designations. Ag forest land is designated, recognizes areas where steeper slopes prevail, 30% or greater, and transportation is provided by either private roads, US Forest Service, or state roads. Urban services are not available and residential development challenges are present due to slow, poor soil conditions, hazardous areas, and lack of police or fire services. Rural residential has areas provides for rural, rural, excuse me, the rural residential area provides for residential development in areas where urban services are not available and slopes may vary up to 30%. These area include, include hazard areas, critical wildlife habitats, where lower density reduces potential impacts to resources and exposure of loss of property or lives. Small-scale ag uses and residential developments are permitted for residential. Little background on this particular parcel. It is 56 acres. It's currently zoned AF 20 and rural 5. As I've shared earlier, it's already got a designation of ag forest land and rural residential. The property is accessed by Kelsey Lake Road, which is Bonner County owned and maintained gravel road. So some environmental factors found on this parcel. It does contain some at slopes to the east, though they're minimal. Site does not contain any map wetlands. It is not on waterfront or a stream, and it's in a current flood zone X. So the chances of flooding is minimal. Current services on this parcel are an individual well and septic. Fire protection is afforded through the Spirit Lake Fire District. Power is provided by Northern Lights and is within the school district Bonner 83. These are the following agencies that were reviewed, or sorry, routed for agency comments. Out of this list, pre responded. You can see the attached recommendations from DEQ and Fish and Game on this file. And Idaho Department of Lands had no comments. One comment was received and concerns over density, well, and septic. The full letter is attached in the binders this afternoon. Just taking a look at the area as a whole and the land use designations for it, the property we're talking about this afternoon's in the brown and purple. So this is the breakdown of the two designations. And as we analyze this property to see if this, there is adequate evidence to move forward with this, we studied, see if it has steeper slopes that are greater than 30%. If the roads are either private or state-owned or US Forest Service owned, urban services are not available, residential development challenges are present due to slow, poor soil conditions, hazardous areas, or lax police or fire services. Then we compare it to the rural residential ask, where urban services are not available, slopes may vary up to 30%, include hazard areas, critical wildlife habitats, lower densities, have reduced potential to impact to resources, and it's small-scale ag uses and residential developments are still available to the property. So the findings of facts, this parcel is not characterized by slopes steeper than 30%. As we learned earlier, it's generally flat with a small section to the eastern portion of the property that has some slope. Kelsey Lake is a Bonner County owned and maintained travel gravelway. Critical wildlife habitats were not identified by any agency, state, federal, or local. Individual well and septic systems are currently on the property. The parcel is within a fire district, Spirit Lake. Law enforcement is provided by Bonner County Sheriff. Ag uses can be pursued and are viable in the rural residential designation. And residential developments are possible on this parcel. The conclusions of law have not changed since the time the staff report was prepared. Staff finds that this ask is consistent with the Bonner County Revised Code and the Comprehensive Plan, and the zoning commission voted unanimously to approve this project. That concludes my presentations. I can take any questions, commissioners.
Any questions for staff?
So R5 on this parcel is just a little, a little bite piece down there?
It, it is. It's approximately four acres, maybe less than that.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see. Anyone, let's move into, is there a applicant, applicant's representative? Sorry, I ran it for a second there. Is someone representing the applicant or the applicant here?
That would be me.
Okay. You wish to say a few words? You don't have to. You can if you want. Make sure to identify your name for the record.
My name is Glenn Cash. I'm a professional surveyor, representing the applicant. I live about a mile down the road from the project toward Kelsey Lake. Been living there about 40 years. And Daniel's done a good job laying the groundwork. So I would just make myself available for any questions you may have about our thinking, what the client's thinking is. You know, you, where are they headed with this?
Let's see if we have a development agreement in place.
Yeah, exactly. But that's really not their game. I'd like to tell you what the game is, and that's the only reason I'm going to speak on it, is they have a family already, the kids are already living here. And their kids want a piece of land out of this. There was no mechanism. They don't want them to be, they want to be able to finance their own house using that piece of land.
And they have to own the land to be able to get the-
And they do not want to give them 20 acres. So they approached me about getting it rezoned, and the consensus was, considering the time and the money and all that, that they should just rezon the whole property. Notwithstanding that, and they, they made it clear to me that they're retiring here. And they intend to build down on the southeastern portion of the property. But they really don't have any plans at this point for future development, however they like the idea of, you know, if we run out of money or something, we may be able to cut up some land and sell it. That's not on the, on the spit at this time. And so it's all about their kids. And I said this in the planning commission meeting, and I'll say it again, that the, the husband and wife were, I don't want to say they were split on the, the notion of getting the kids the property, but the wife wanted them there because they got a grandbaby. And the, the husband wants them there, but he wants them all the way up in the northeast corner of the property, in case something happens, right?
Okay, not too close.
So if you have any questions, I, I can answer them for you. If not, I'll sit down and be quiet a minute.
Do you guys have any questions?
No.
No.
I have an understanding of that.
I was going to say, I love my grandkids in short doses. Okay, so we'll go and move on. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of this, this file? See, none will go to neutral? Still don't know why we have neutral. Although we did have a neutral last time. Susan was kind of-
She said.
But she didn't really kind of come out, yeah.
Quite.
Okay, anyone opposed? Go ahead, Dave.
All right. So I understand the personal nature of this thing, but I also, I have to refer back to 12-211. The applicant must state in writing why the application is necessary, why the amendment is necessary. And they haven't done that. So I, I mean, I sympathize with family situations and so on, but they can, they could split off a 20 if they wanted to, but they don't want to. And so it's really not a necessary thing. And really, you know, a comp plan amendment really shouldn't be made on someone's person, you know, on, on a matter of sympathy or empathy. It should be according to law. So that's all I have to say.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak out in opposition?
I have one person.
Okay. Susan?
Hi, Susan Bowman. And I'm just curious. So first of all, I'd like to say that you're putting yourself in a, a position of personally judging people's reasons for creating higher density. That should never be the case. You should never be personally judging people's particular reasons for quadrupling density, or whatever they're doing. In this case, it's probably quadrupling. But I, I just, I, I really have a problem with that because it doesn't speak to code and, and to land use and to planning. So you're letting people tell you the reasons why they want to do something. Those could be value, you know, those could be actually good personal reasons that don't follow the code. And so I would like to bring us back to the code, like Dave just said. I don't see that this is necessary. I would also, you know, want, I would wonder what conditions per the new amendment that you just passed, what would you be putting on this person? What conditions would be on this? I, I don't even see how that new code that you just passed even works on something like this. So, yeah, it would be great to hear from the planning department what types of conditions they might be placing on this based on that new code amendment that you just passed.
Well, that wouldn't apply to this application, number one.
Why not?
Because it has time of advertisement and all this other things. It's not a-
Well, I'm saying if, I'm saying that if, let's say this came in after your code amendment.
Yeah, we're not, Susan, we're not going to entertain, entertain hypotheticals. If you want to have this conversation, you can have it with Commissioner Conley.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be glad to have it after the hearing and talk about some things that you could use.
Because you can't come up with any, that's why.
Uh, no.
No, that's actually not why. I'm not going to let you derail the hearing.
Show me how your code works.
If you're done with your comment, let me know, and we'll go ahead and move on.
I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else online that wishes to?
Anyone else?
Okay, great. So I'll go ahead and close, close public, actually, before closing public comment, is there any rebuttal? Staff?
Daniel, Brett, staff, for the record, I'd like to point out that the property was looked at and compared against the comp plan. And that's how we got to find that it is consistent with comp plan this afternoon. I did notice one mistake in my presentation. Went through the planning commission, not the zoning commission. That's all I have to add.
So unanimous decision by the planning commission?
Yes, Commissioner.
For approval. Okay, great. I'll go ahead and close public comment then, and we'll move into deliberation. Yeah, a couple of things. One, we are, as far as letting people tell us things, I still kind of believe in free speech. If they want to volunteer some information, that's great. Does that mean it's going to go into our calculus for the decision? Absolutely not. If you're paying attention to the file, staff laid out the reason that there's an issue with the way this, this comp plan is designated for this piece of land. It happens to be incorrect based on the facts. And that's what we're supposed to be making decisions on. As far as necessary goes, the bowmans have, have been great about bringing that word up repeatedly, no matter how many times we shoot it down and, and show that they're incorrect, but they continue to ring that bell. So good for them. When we see that there is a mistake in the zoning map and the comp plan map, then it's necessary for us to fix that, especially at the request of the landowner. We're not out randomly fixing him. We wait till a landowner says, hey, listen, I think there's- Wait till a landowner says, hey, listen, I think there's a problem, I can prove it's wrong, then it's necessary for us to fix it. And that's what, that's what we're attempting to do here today.
So yeah, one of the things that I look at when I see this piece is that. It's got that little fraction, four acre parcel down to the south. Um, so that it's been. Five acres rural five and the rest of the parcel is. R twenty, that's, that's, those are pretty big stretches, but you look at the other. Um, R fives around the area and it it seems to be. A fit, but I do believe that um. This is where that would come in pretty good, that you could probably. Uh, make it, because it's a, it's a family ask, you could probably have some restrictions on that, but I I don't want to go into that, but I I did, I just did.
Well, if.
We're not enough as it. We're not. Utilize the conditional rezoning from the, from the exception from when the file was.
I understand.
Was submitted, not at the very last.
Oh, I get it.
I don't think Susan meant to. Apply that, I think maybe more just asking how it might work, not what we should in this case.
Right. But I guess it it's still for me, this is one of those things where. Should it be five or should it be twenty, I mean, it's a split zone, that doesn't mean that it. It definitely falls to one or the other, right?
Right.
This is, this is a comp plan amendment only.
Right.
There's not.
Okay. But that's where we're headed, right? Okay.
Yeah, it's. The challenge with this is, the the comp plan was laid down like the zone map along section lines. No regard to property sizes or property boundary layout. It was just laid down on section lines in many, many cases. So, so, you you know, to the applicant's credit, the first question they asked when they called was. Can we do a boundary line adjustment and move this zone up into the corridor where we want it? No, you can't, you can't move the zone, the R five zone, you have to rezone the whole property, right? It's it's the way it works, so it, and and it would be separate, and so it needed to be. You know, it needed to be in contiguous file, in contiguous parcel, needed to be consistent. And so we, staff reviews it against the comprehensive plan, this is a comprehensive plan amendment, we review it against the comprehensive.
Yeah, we look at the characteristics, it clearly falls under the rule. I mean, the staff laid it all out. It's pretty obvious. Steve?
I'm good with.
Okay, well, if everybody's good with it or not good with it, actually, I don't really care, just uh, we'll undertake a motion either way.
I move to approve this project file AM zero 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 three dash two two. Our comprehensive plan map amendment from agricultural forest land rural residential to rural residential. Finding that it is in accord with the general specific objectives of Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code. As enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time. Of the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing, I further moved to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law. As set forth in the staff report. Direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions. To reflect this motion, have chairman sign and transmit to all interested parties. This action does not result in taking of private property.
I'll second the motion.
Hey, we have a motion, a second, we'll call the. Hi.
Hi.
Hi ma'am.
Okay, let's move on to the conference plan map resolution adoption.
Is that forty? Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty, amending the Bonner County projected land use map.
I second that.
Yeah, we have a motion, a second, we'll call vote.
Hi.
Hi ma'am.
And that passes and that closes out that file, we'll go ahead and move on to AM zero zero two five dash one. Staff may begin whatever.
Where's my screen sharing here again? Make it bigger.
Oh. So X is something.
The big, the big. Yeah, first one took an hour.
Yeah. Okay.
So we're here to look at AM zero zero two five dash two one, a comp plan map amendment proposal. Um, the applicant is requesting a comp plan amendment from rural residential designation to transition designation. Aerial view of the property there on the screen highlighted in blue, along with the dates that the required noticing was accomplished on the file. Site is uh, has residential and commercial uses on it, it's about five point three acres. Property has direct access onto highway ninety-five, it's within Selkirk Fire Northern Lights, as according to the application. And Bonner School District number eighty-four. The land use designation and the zoning are shown up there on the screen. Uh, zoning is rural five currently with some commercial to the south, and then the land use designation is rural residential all around. Natural features, pretty unremarkable, a couple of steep slopes on the property, and of course, there's some flood plain down by the water. Site is mostly prime farmland soils there in the periwinkle color on the screen. This is a list of agencies that were noticed in the course of reviewing this file. All agencies responded either with no comment or did not respond, as of the date of this file was prepared for viewing and no public comments were received as well. So getting into the review on this file, uh, the rural residential designation, its current designation. Uh, the rural residential area according to the comp plan. Provides for residential development in areas where urban services are not available and slopes may vary up to thirty percent. These areas include hazard areas and critical wildlife habitats where lower densities reduce potential impacts to resources. And exposures to loss of property or lives, small scale agricultural uses and residential developments are permitted. So according to the submitted application, the parcel currently features both residential and commercial uses. Including a single family home and four commercial storage buildings, southern portion of Algoama Lake is along the western edge of the parcel. Per the submitted application, there's a well at the north end of the parcel, and of course, access is provided by highway ninety-five directly. As previously mentioned, most of the parcel has prime farmland soils. This area of the parcel that has the prime farmland soils is currently developed for the single family home and four commercial storage buildings. As well as gravel driveways and parking areas for both the home and the storage buildings. So because of this, the areas that are mapped as prime farmland soil are not currently usable for farming. Putting them to farming use would require demolishing the existing development on the property. So the transition designation according to the comp plan is reserved for those areas of the county where a mixture of land uses can occur. Which may include higher density residential uses, commercial, industrial and light industrial uses. Due to the intensity of the land use, these areas require primary transportation routes, urban like water and sewer services, fire and police services. So as previously mentioned, parcel is served directly by highway ninety-five, is served by police and fire service. Not possible to put any of the prime farmland soil to ag use on this parcel without demolishing the existing development. Parcel is served by septic and well, and Bonner County has not historically denied the transition designation to land served by individual septic and well. Looking at some of the objectives and goals and policies of the comprehensive plan relative to this proposal here. The implementation element of the comp plan, economic development portion states an objective that Bonner County shall provide for areas. Shall provide areas for the growth of businesses, professional and technical services without adversely impacting the integrity of residential neighborhoods. So the parcel in question, as you saw, is immediately to the north of four commercially zoned properties along highway ninety-five, and is therefore consistent with the area. Objective, from the comp plan, commercial and industrial areas shall be located in defined areas which encourage cluster development and discourage sprawl and strip development. As previously mentioned, parcel in question is immediately to the north of four other commercially zoned properties along highway ninety-five, and the proposal is consistent with the area. Economic development policy from the comp plan implementation element, low impact and light industrial uses should be encouraged to provide a stable economic base while avoiding environmental impacts. Parcel in question is immediately to the north of four commercially zoned properties with highway access. And the property proposal is therefore consistent with the area. Commercial uses have been occurring historically on the property, Bonner County has not historically denied the transition designation to similarly situated lands. Policy, historical, commercial, historic, commercial development serving rural neighborhoods should be recognized. And as previously mentioned, commercial uses have been occurring historically on this property. So in summary and conclusion, we have direct highway access, police and fire service. The prime farmland soils are not usable without the demolition of development located on the parcel. Bonner County has not historically denied transition designation to land served by septic and well. And the parcel in question is immediately to the north of four commercially zoned properties along highway ninety-five, so the proposal is consistent with the area. And commercial uses have been occurring historically on this property. Staff therefore recommends approval of this request for a comp plan map amendment from rural residential to transition. That concludes my presentation, uh, if there were any questions, I can take those.
Uh, commissioners have any questions for staff?
No.
Nope. Okay, thanks Jason. Uh, is there anybody from the applicant's representative, Jeremy?
What a grim thought. Oh, hi, Mr. Grim. Um, I don't see. Yeah, I know, I don't see it on the screen here.
Don't worry, she's critical of me too.
Because that was the most important issue in the entire file was calling out unrecorded color.
Mr. Jeremy Grimm, uh, owner of Whiskey Rock Planning Consulting, professional planner for the record, um, thanks so much, um, Jason. Staff did a good job, um, sort of representing this, uh, one thing I emphasized is that there was a unanimous, um, uh, recommendation for approval from the planning commission. Um, I'll try to be brief because, um, it seems like it's, uh, well aligned. Um, as was mentioned, the site got five point three acres. Um, zone rural residential five, single family home, um, there's some non-conforming buildings on it, uh, we've got some parking, about five hundred feet of frontage. On uh, US ninety-five. Um, you're all probably familiar, but I just wanted to show you some photos of the site, this is the uh, the parcel in question. Looking northwest, uh, this is the adjacent property, uh, looking southwest, this is as you move down towards, uh, DuFert. Um, again, the adjacent parcel, so we've got some commercial uses along the corridor here. And then it moves into the storage, uh, a little bit further south. And then, uh, we've got the Bonner County, um, EMS facility here. Um, you know, looking at the area zoning, of course, as was mentioned, it's rural five. But uh, you can see that commercial zoning due south of the, uh, little red parcel there. Um, you know, comp plan designation rural residential, uh, but I wanted to point out with that second arrow, just my, oh yeah, right here. Um, there's another piece down just south of DuFert that was very similarly stated, uh, that was, uh, um, approved for, um. Comp plan amendment to transition, uh, again, it's a very similar circumstance. Um, that that happened back in, uh, two thousand sixteen. And, uh, the board found that it was in accord with the goals and objectives of the comp plan and, uh, the amendment was, uh. Supported and passed for a very similar parcel, uh, and that's what this parcel looks like, um. Uh, this is looking northeast on ninety-five, if you're coming north, and there's an RV park there now. Uh, there it is from, from the air, so that's sort of the comparable along this corridor. Um, you know, looking at other transition areas, uh, up in Coca Lala, you've got, or down Coca Lala, you've got another large transition area. Sort of along the highway. Um, kind of what it looks like with encoder from the air. And this was one that was just approved for a CUP for an RV park in that area. Uh, looking over, you know, in the Pac River, um, by, uh, Samuels, you've got some other strips of transition. And again, they're, they're falling along the ninety-five corridor, over in Priest River, we've got a lot of transition, pretty much everything west of town. Uh, and the point I'm making here is just that it's, uh, it seems to be consistent with these, uh, highway corridors to have this transition, uh, comp plan designation. Uh, and this is down Spirit Lake. Um, when you look at the existing comp plan designation, you know, it does state out. That, uh, in the rural residential, these areas include hazardous areas with critical wildlife habitat where lower densities reduce potential impacts to resources. Exposure to loss of property or lives, um, we would put forward that none of that really applies here, you know, we're on an urban corridor. So, um, not really looking at critical wildlife habitats. Um, finally, in Idaho code sixty-seven sixty-five thirty-five, it talks about clear and concise decisions, express standards and. Of course, um, you know, uh, anything other than an approval here would. Suggest that it might have been an arbitrary decision based on the other approval, uh, to the south that I mentioned this one here, back in two thousand sixteen. So concluding remarks, uh, the property is, uh, adjacent commercial zone property and abuts higher volume highway corridors. Um, it's not rural, fronts ninety-five for over five hundred feet, uh, it's serviced by Segal Fire, there's several legally non-conforming commercial structures. On the property and, uh, recently P and Z and the Board of County Commissioners approved a almost identical request, just, uh. Point six-three miles south, so, uh, the characteristic of this quarter and the vicinity, uh, of the subject parcel is more towards commercial. So, uh, that's it, try to be brief, any questions, otherwise I'll sit down.
Questions for Mr. Graham?
None.
Okay, thanks Graham. Alright, uh, is there anybody, we're gonna public comment, anybody wish to speak in favor of this development? Or this change, excuse me, not development, gotta be careful with that word. Anyone neutral? Anyone opposed? Okay. No one? Can you call us from friends and have them put their hands up? Alrighty, so with that, we will, uh, there's really no reason for rebuttal, uh, there were no questions, so we'll move right into deliberation. Go ahead.
I don't see a problem, I think it's a, a good fit for the area, um. And it'll clean the parcel up.
Yeah, I think it's a. Excellent ideal, along the highways where those are supposed to be.
Are we alright there Billy?
Now, based on, based on the current use, um, on the current use and the fact that the highway frontage and the. The adjacent commercial properties, this, this probably should have been zoned commercially. Back when they.
Along with that.
The zoning map back in two thousand eight. But it wasn't, so I think this will be, this will help correct that, and I'm in favor.
Jason's presentation, they discuss in-depth analysis of the comprehensive plan and of course.
Right.
If you guys, if you guys adopt those findings.
Yeah, in fact, the findings of fact are extremely complete. Thanks to, uh, Jason. So, I'll undertake a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve this project file AM zero zero two five dash two one. For a comprehensive plan amendment, rural residential to transition, finding that it is in accord. With the general and specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code is enumerated in the following conclusions of law. And based upon the evidence submitted up to the time of the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the findings of facts and the conclusions of law as set forth in the staff report and. Direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion, having chairman sign and transmit to all. Having chairman sign and transmit to all interested parties, this action does not result in the taking of private property.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second roll call vote. Hi.
Hi.
I am, ma'am.
Okay, now the comprehensive plan map resolution adoption, which I'm assuming is forty one.
Forty one.
All right. To approve resolution twenty twenty two dash forty one. Mending Bonner County projected land use map.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second roll call vote. Hi.
Hi.
Hi, you're good.
That motion passes.
Can I request a five minute?
Okay, we're going to go ahead and take a, it's three o'clock. And we're going to go and take a five minute recess.
Yep, that's good. That gives us a chance to get
year to.
We're we're timing you, so the pressure's on.
How you can speak freely and move about the room?
Oh.
I stopped recording.
Yeah, she stopped.
Raise your tray table to see back.
Indeed. What am I doing? Looking for something. Presentation. Looking at these words going, what am I doing here?
Oh, goodness. That was fun. First two were exciting. There's been a long time battle going on with the and their interpretation.
We must.
Okay. Ready? Okay, we are back on the record. And with that, we will go ahead and move into file MOD zero 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 one dash two two. And staff may begin whenever they're ready.
All right, thanks, commissioners. So this is a modification request, Idaho Club North Lake. Conditional use permit planned unit development was approved originally back in two thousand twenty. What they're asking for is that the applicant's asking to modify the planned unit development for the following. There are three ten thousand square foot storage boat storage units that were approved. They want to combine those into one thirty thousand square foot unit. Relocate the community drain field and then relocate thirty eight of the parking spaces. This is, this is the map that the site plan that is proposed. This is not the original site plan. But this is showing that, uh, here we go. So this is the thirty thousand square foot storage unit this proposed, and I'll let the applicant go into this a little more detail. But this, the original three units were along this way here. And because of the way the the storage unit codes are written. It was gonna, you know, the the paving that was required for all three units was going to cover a lot more surface. This is actually a better solution.
Where was the original septic fields located? I can read this little map in here. You remember?
I don't have a
Well, they represented.
Yeah, he'll, he'll, he'll show the, he'll show where it was originally. All right, we'll go on. So what was interesting about the application, so the the original application showed in the in the verbiage of the approval process indicated that they're, they were approved for three ten thousand square foot buildings. On the, on the site plan, it showed, it showed smaller structures that totaled eighteen thousand square feet. But in the verbiage of the document, they approved the three ten thousand square foot units. So by by changing from what was on the original site plan to this, what's on this site plan. It will reduce the required paving substantially. And you see that there from twenty three thousand six hundred square feet to eighty four, eighty five, forty square feet. So increases the impervious surface. Just over three thousand square feet, remove relocating the drain field is going to move it further back from the artificial ordinary high water mark. From three hundred and twenty feet to four hundred and sixty. And then relocating the thirty eight approved parking spaces from along the railroad right away. What what you're going to see there is that you're going to see a stormwater plan that that around that that parking area. And and you see it, you'll see it in that site plan. If you look closely, you'll see where the stormwater is put in place to address the retention basins put in place to address the additional runoff from that. Yeah, the applicant indicated that combining the three buildings and pave services reduces the amount of impervious surface. Easier to manage the the runoff in one location. The the boat storage. I missed. I'm going the wrong way. That's what I missed. So the the point is, on this particular, on the boat storage modification, that there's three different parcels, two different parcels shown here. That the the parcel that the boat storage is on is on the, on the other side of the railroad tracks. It's now up against the water. So it's, it's shown as two point one two acres on the, on the site plan. They just have to meet the requirements of the boat storage code, portion of the code when when they develop this. There, there are no wetlands present on the site. Most of the entire property appears to be in the flood plain, but there and that can be worked through with a flood development permit. They showed the appropriate landscaping and stormwater management area along with the with the design of the structure. Sorry for the confusion. The drain field, the applicant says that increasing the setback. They're increasing the setback by forty percent, lessening the risk of associated contaminants reaching the lake. Staff confirms that that is being moved an additional hundred and sixty feet from the artificial ordinary high watermark. Located relocating the proposed paved parking area to a location offers more green space to adequately detain and treat stormwater. This is important in this area that the stormwater be detained and allowed to be treated, lowering the temperature of the water before releasing it back into the lake. So the the parking lot is located in area identified as open space. It's important to note that this doesn't change any of the wetlands that that are already delineated on the site plan, so. This, the stormwater plan, we sent down to the engineering department through and this is, this is their response as they reviewed the site plan. So they, uh, we submit the site, they, the applicant turns in the stormwater management plan, we send it to the engineering department, they review it. They send back any deficiencies or comments that they have. We, we send that to the applicant. The applicant fixes those, send it back to us, we send it back to engineering and engineering sends us this. So that's, that's how that happens. And I think we have two very well trained engineers in stormwater. They do a really good job with all of the stormwater plans that come before them. There's a lot. DEQ submitted a letter, agency review stating that they didn't, they don't review the project on a specific basis, project specific basis. They do provide a guide in addressing project specific conditions that may apply. So basically, what they do is they send about five pages of information and say, pick out the stuff that applies to this project and use it. So we pass that whole five pages on to the applicant and let them and ask them to do that. Idaho fishing game. Provided comments that are included in the record indicating that the modification will help mitigate but not eliminate the negative effects from this development. So it's recommended that when you and US Fish and Wildlife Service finish reevaluating the effects on bull trout from this project. The approval from the Army Corps will likely cause further modifications to the CUP. If there are significant changes, IDFG recommends the CUP be reevaluated to ensure compliance with those changes. And that's a fair comment. It's important to note that the 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 main, the main change here with boat storage is on the other parcel. It's not up against the water. It's not part of most of this application that's being reviewed, if at all, the the other changes, the moving the drain field back and moving the parking spaces. You know, may, may be part of that review. Some of the other public comments that we received, I, you have in your file, request to reopen the original file for another hearing. Concerns over environmental impacts from the project. And then request to require survey of cultural resources from by the National Historic Preservation Act. That request came from the Kalispel tribe. The request to reopen the original file for another hearing, there's, there's ways in the code to do that through revocation process. The applicant is still working through finalizing the conditions prior to issuance of that original conditional use permit. There's not a reason at this point to reopen the original file for another hearing. Between all of the agencies that are involved in this project, these environmental impacts are being addressed. The original conditional use permit was approved by the board after a public hearing on January thirteenth twenty one. Issuance is still pending. Now, the modification code in the ordinance says that the decision must determine that modifications are in accordance with the original permit application. I shall not confine the review to the proposed mod and shall confine the review to the proposed modification. So the the charge to you today, commissioners, is to determine that this application, this modification application is in accord with the original application. That that's your charge. It, so you're not going to see an analysis of all of these other things. You're going to see an analysis, is this in accord with the original application? And as we reviewed the project, had the county engineer review the stormwater plan, the modified stormwater plan. As we reviewed the findings of fact and conclusions of why, importantly, the findings of fact that indicated that there could be three ten thousand square foot storage units on this property listed in the findings of fact. We found, staff found that this proposed change, this modifications in accord with the current comprehend or the current application. So staff would would recommend approval. The boat storage was originally approved for three ten thousand square foot buildings. This, this turns it into one. There is going to be a decrease in impervious surface. Combining the impervious surfaces together improves the ability to address stormwater. The community drain fields farther away from the artificial ordinary high watermark. Thirty eight spaces approved along the railroad tracks, moving to a lot closer to lot five and the water is being addressed through the stormwater plan. All other conditions of the original approval remain in effect. Conclusion is simply the proposed modifications in accord with the requirements for the original permit application. That is the conclusion of law. Staff.
Wouldn't have the applicants representative.
Good afternoon. My name is Scott Brown. I'm a civil engineer with James A. Sewell Associates here in Sandpoint. I became involved in this project after it was approved and when it was time to go ahead and implement and design infrastructure that's going to be going into it and also just manage and oversee the conditions of approval that were set forth on the project to make sure that the engineering and surveying and everything that needs to go into that. It's moving and that's kind of where we're at today. And I guess what that kind of leads into is, well, first of all, I'll just, I'll give you just an update of where we are with some of this. Some of the infrastructure design and, you know, and many of these different items are related to the conditions of approval. We're working with various agencies. You know, as you'll see, like the right now, the the public water system, we're in the works with DEQ right now. They're reviewing the plans and specs. The wells been drilled. The wells has very good capacity and water quality, so we're moving ahead with that. Sewer system plans are being reviewed by both PhD and DEQ. And then we also went through the design process with the Idaho Transportation Department and will be putting in a right hand turn lane into the project. We're working with the Samoan Fire District to come up with a good fire suppression system for which will come in, of course, which is necessary for the building. As Milton already mentioned, we've got stormwater management plans approved. And the westerly portion of the site is in fact out of the flood plain where the new building will be constructed based on base, a hundred year base flight elevation. So here, I know it was asked a little bit ago, what did the current approved site plan look like? Well, as you'll see here, there's the three storage buildings with paved aprons going into each building and then the drain field. Well, as you'll see here, there's the three storage buildings with paved aprons going into each building and then the drain field was located at the northeast corner of the site. And all the parking areas that we'd like to relocate were once located along the railroad right away, as you see there. So the proposed modifications. You know, we combining all these different storage buildings into one really does help things out, both environmentally and just just, it reduces the overall impervious surface because all the different paved approaches going into the buildings will now be going into one building. Which is really important because most of the contaminants during stormwater runoff are located on these impervious surfaces. So by reducing those by three thousand square feet really does help environmentally here in this instance. It creates more open space on that particular two acre site. And the building, like I said, is in a location that is out of the flood plain. And relocating the drain field for obvious reasons relocating it a little to the south to fit the building where we need to put it is one reason, but it also sets back from the lake quite a bit for forty percent further than it was. And this particular whole, whole two acre site was looked at originally and the soil conditions over the whole site are all the same, so by moving the drain field, it still meets all the setbacks. It's still A two soils, the design doesn't change, it's basically in a better spot. Let's see. And then the parking spaces. You know, the new location of these parking spaces serves more than just a place to park a vehicle. The proposed twenty five foot drive aisle that goes down the middle of the parking spaces provides, you know, better, better emergency vehicle access to the marina, which originally was a concern of the fire department. Just being able to get down to marina. According to the fire department, it's not uncommon to see boat fires and things like that. Other emergency vehicles, this gets them right down to the marina by having that aisle way there. It provides for more green space and areas to detain and treat stormwater runoff. And the parking lot is set up so that it drains to the south, not toward the lake, but toward or the south, there are wetlands down in that area. However, the parking lot itself sets back from the wetland sixty feet or more. And I think the normal setback conditions for development in the county are forty feet, so it exceeds those setback parameters. And just want to reiterate one thing, you know, no work here is being proposed beyond the average ordinary high watermark or within wetlands. That is in re, in addition to anything that was already approved. And we are not asking for any reduction in common area. The area being requested, you know, is compared also to what was originally approved. So here's, here's a site plan. With the proposed conditions on it, as you'll see, the building up in the, the upper northeast corner, the drain field now located in the middle of that two acre parcel. And then on the other side, you've got the parking area with the drive aisle leading up to the marina. I'm just in the southern portion of the common area. And there's still, you know, the, I think it's, I forget how many feet, but there's quite a bit of a buffer between the lots as well and the shoreline, as you can see there. And I guess with that. Any questions for me at this point?
Mr. Smith, any questions for the app?
Not at this point. You can make a statement and they'll rebut.
Okay, so let's move on to public comment and let me, let me say before we start public comment. I, I was reading through the letters and noticed that there was some request to withdraw the original approval in twenty twenty one and we're not here to talk about that. There's a process for that. This is not it, we're going to focus specifically on this, if you get off task, I will stop you and redirect you back on task, so. Anyone else in favor of this file? None will go to neutral? Okay, opposed, we have a sign sheet. Let's go in the order of sign up here, David Heap. Make sure when you do speak, come to the microphone and identify yourself for the record. Please.
I'm David Heap, a resident of Bonner County. I'd like to yield my tongue to Mr. Smith, is that?
Sure.
Yielding my time to Mr. Smith.
Okay, good. Susan Howard.
Susan Howard, Hope Idaho. I have comments that you said you don't want us to comment on now, so I'll refrain from that, but I have, I do have a question I think pertains to the, the land down there, if they do dredge that island and fill in that lakefront, how will that affect?
We're not dealing with that today.
Okay, but I, I just thought the dredged land might add to the shoreline that.
This is something if you want to ask the applicant that.
Separately?
Does deal with the modification.
Okay, thank you.
Sandy Bessler, is Sandy here? I'll see her, I know Sandy.
She was here, wasn't she?
I'll leave her open then, just in case she wants to come out. Is there anybody else that wants, before I get to Brad, you're next on the list, so before I get to Brad, is there anybody else that wants to give their time to Brad?
We have two more online.
Okay, okay. You all have six minutes, okay. Jennifer Extrem. You're gonna, okay, I'll, I'll mark it just in case you need it. Whitney Palmer. Want to speak? Okay. You're up, make sure you identify your name for the record if you would please.
Whitney Palmer Sagal Idaho. I'm with the Center for Biological Diversity and of course, born and raised here as well. There's a couple of things that I'm not clear on with the modifications. If you look at the map here, the site plan map. There's the turnaround area below the parking area. So this isn't the site plan map, I don't know if you can change the slide. So it's to my understanding that there's a grassy swale area below where the parking area has been moved. The thirty eight space parking area, but there's that turnaround and it doesn't show the proximity to Tressel Creek. And I believe Mr. Brown said that it's a sixty foot buffer from the wetland. But I believe according to county code, there needs to be a seventy five foot buffer from Tressel Creek.
We can have.
That's correct. Yeah, he'll rebut.
I think he was talking about that to the wetlands to the south, there was sixty. That's a good question.
Okay, so is that addressed later? Thank you. And beyond that, for the modifications, you know, you it's proposed as though these will be less damaging environmentally. With less impervious surfaces, but there's still a variance to code for the amount of impervious surfaces and so it's still higher than the code calls for. And beyond that, that you know, is something that I would ask the commissioners to consider. With these environmental impacts, there's no grassy swale below the turnaround area. And that impervious surface is much closer to Tressel Creek, which is a extremely sensitive creek, very important for spawning habitat. And then where the north branch of Tressel Creek is going to be rerouted is actually not shown on this map that I can see. And that also requires a seventy five foot buffer according to county code and that is not included in any of the original plans and codes, so I just ask that the commissioners follow that. Thank you.
Thank you, Whitney. Let's go to Diane Factor. And again, Diane, I'll remind you, get tired of hearing this, make sure you identify yourself for the record.
My name is Diane Factor. I'm a resident of Hope. I also own agricultural land in above Clark Fork. Fifty years ago, I built a small home up Tressel Creek, which I sold a couple of years ago, I built it with my first husband and I'm been living and being on that creek my entire life. I understand what you said about, we're just addressing the issue today, this is my first time appearing before you. Now that I retired, I have time for these things and I wanted to appeal to you as our commissioners. Because though I don't have details, I do know that the site very well. And, you know, I used to fish in the creek, we actually had a few flume on the creek and we drank that water. All of that is gone, the, you know. And so I just feel like it's a football game where we're just creeping towards the goal, but the goal is not a good one. And so I just want to appeal to you. When staff talked about well, but it's on, on the other side of the railroad tracks, those railroad tracks run right on the water. As you know, you know, there's a rail car that went down years ago that people go visit. I never did that, but so it made it sound like what they're trying to do is in a safe place, but my just visual stopping there, looking what's being done. I don't think it's safe, I feel that it will degrade. The, the whether they're officially wetlands and the Tressel Creek. And I just think that this is a very special area as a Idahoan. What I love to do here is fish, hunt and run my horse. And I think that the, the kinds of changes that the Idaho Club have made in the Pack River area and now creeping down into the Tressel Creek area is not what I as an Idahoan want to see happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Diane. About Suzanne Jewell? All right, then let's go ahead and go to Brad.
Or you want to go to the?
We'll do the, we'll, let's do Brad first, then we'll do the. Are you ready to go? Wait, we can take a vote on it right now. Go ahead and go.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioners, my name's Brad Smith. Live here in Sandpoint and I'm a representative of the Idaho Conservation League. I'm going to try not to repeat some of the stuff that, that Whitney brought up, but one of the things that I need clarification on, if you look at this modified site plan versus the original application. This original application shows the sixty foot vegetative buffer that is between the residential units and the shoreline. It's unclear to me if that has been eliminated from this new site plan, it doesn't appear to me to be on this new site plan, so. So I'd, I'd love that the applicant to address that. I'd also just like to say that you know, Whitney talked about the, the stream buffers and the seventy five foot requirement that's in county code and it's not clear if that is measured from the existing stream channel for the north branch or if that's from the relocated stream channel. And irrespective, does that mean that this new pump house in the, the new site plan is at within the buffer or not? Because if it is, that would be a violation of code. And then there's also just discrepancies about the stream buffer that is to be applied in the repairian site plan that was submitted to the Army Corps. They have a forty foot buffer for the north branch proposed and a sixty foot buffer for the main branch that is proposed, which would appear to be in contradiction of what is stated in the application. So that needs clarification to ensure that that is in conformance with code as well. Bear with me while I get my notes, I have too much stuff. Another question I have is part of code, which would be section twelve dash seven, three, three requiring a forty foot setback from wetlands. There is an exception in instances where the Army Corps has an approved fill permit, but I believe that part was removed from code. And I don't know if that, if that exception was eliminated before or after the original approval of, of this project, but if that was eliminated.
Again, that's something outside of the scope we're looking at, really. We're just looking at moving, you know, combining those three store, both storages into one, reducing the hard surface and the parking.
Okay, I hear you. I, I do think though, you know, that this whole thing should have had a more thorough review from the get go. You know, the, the comment letter that I submitted, that's part of the record cites numerous examples of what I think are inconsistencies with the comp plan. And, you know, if there's really any opportunity at all for the applicant to resubmit an application that is in conformance with code in the comp plan, I would really encourage that because I don't think this got the review that it should have.
Molly? You're here?
Yes, hello.
Molly.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Yeah, identify your name for the record if you would, Molly.
Molly McCann with the Lakes Commission. You should have a letter from us in your file addressing our concerns about this project. Including the attached marina, island removal and rerouting of North Branch. Today's modification request and our letter just happened to coincide. But the letter was meant to address all relevant agencies involved in permitting this private marina PUD development as a whole. Knowing that each component of this project is dependent on the other. Since your original approval of this PUD, the core dredge and fill permit has been put on hold and is not approved. I would argue this modification is not in accord with the origin, the original application due to that fact. It is our understanding from looking at the site and construction plans for the project and listening to the previous public hearings that this modification and previously approved conditions are dependent on dredge and fill activities. Meaning it appears portions of the PUD, like the shoreline buffer, the newly moved parking lot requested in this modification and possibly the boat launch area, need to be built on lake bed fill. So again, it is our understanding, and correct us if we're wrong, that this modification cannot physically happen without the dredge and fill permit approval. Allowing ground disturbance for this PUD would be irresponsible until a decision has been made about state and federal permits that this marina PUD development are dependent on. Please consider recognizing the need to look at this development in its entirety while making your decision today. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thanks, Molly. Who's next? Susan, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, will you make sure you identify your name for the record, please?
Susan Drumheller and I live in Sagal Idaho and I, I think Brad Smith and Molly McCann hit the nail on the head. While I appreciate that the applicant is, you know, trying to reduce impervious services and move the community drain field further from surface waters. I think overall the impacts from this proposal could be huge and one of the, the biggest concerns I have is the impacts of dredge and fill and, and the entirety of this development on bull trout, a threatened species which depend on Tressel Creek, which is considered one of the most important tributaries of Lake Ponderay for, for bull trout. And as Milton said in an earlier hearing today, you know, the comp plan is just full of goals and objectives that talk about the need to address impacts of development in our county and in multiple places. It talks about our natural resources and our, you know, treasured iconic species, wildlife and fish species that make this a great place to. and our, you know, treasured iconic species, wildlife and fish species that make this a great place to live. So I just would like to echo what everybody else said, while, while some of the changes these the developer is, is doing here to reduce impervious surfaces, they're still not in line with code and the variances probably should never have been approved in the first place. So I see these changes as lipstick on a pig and, and I'd like to see you wait until you get the feedback from those agencies that are looking at the dredge and fill permits and, you know, biological opinion and all those things that are really important as part of this project and, and not put the blinders on and just look at, you know, the, the narrow issue before you today, but let's look at this holistically. Thanks a lot.
Okay, thanks, Susan. Arrow, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, Arrow, will you make sure you, you give us your name for the record, please?
Yes, hi, my name is Arrow Bond Ellis and I have, I'm a resident of Bonner County. I live up on the Upper Pack and I have frequented Tressel Creek and I just, I don't have a lot of technical things to say, but I do know that just this, the whole project, the impact that it would have on the, the wildlife, on the bull trout, on just the whole, the whole area. It's, it's, it's just, it's going to be, you know, again, part of the destruction, you know, just kind of destroying why we live here and what makes Lake Ponderay beautiful, what makes Hope and Sandpoint and, and just why we live here. And we, we need to protect these places. This Tressel Creek is a, is a precious place and moving fill around and shifting all those, all the sand around and everything that's just, that's, that has been, you know, on the planet and moving in the way that nature wanted it to move for, for, forever. And I just can't imagine that shifting everything and just, and putting all of this stuff in is not going to have huge impact on, on the wildlife, on the lake, and and just on the people that live here. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Arrow. Anyone else? Anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak that hasn't spoken yet? Okay, then we'll go ahead and move to rebuttal.
Where'd my thing go there?
I mean, if you get our technical guru.
Yeah, we just got this. Not a problem.
Yeah, no, on call.
See, Jan, just go up there.
Just, yeah. She's an expert on everything.
Yeah.
That's why. I'll, I'll do my best here to answer some of the questions and concerns that came up. As far as the, the setback from the branch of the creek that is nearest to the site along the southerly portion here. They're right currently, the, the, we surveyed this the other day and I wish I'd put this on here, but we, the creek comes, comes along and it's, it's a good 75 feet from everything that's going on until it turns. And I don't know if you can see my cursor, but right here where this area is where my cursor's at, there's a, a large culvert that's right there. And so the culvert itself is probably not 75 feet, however, the, the creek is. And then when, as it's been mentioned, when that, when that alignment of that creek gets, gets changed, you know, so that it doesn't dump into the Marina, if you will, anymore, then it would be 75 feet at that time. So just to be clear on that. And as far as being 75 feet from a future pump house, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe a building location permit would be needed for, so at that time, we would, of course, submit plans where, to show the exact location of that, which would meet any required setbacks. As far as any kind of modifications being built on planned dredge fill, currently, everything you see here is already on upland area or not. We're not showing anything that is over existing water. And then I know the hammerhead on the county road isn't necessarily part of this product, what we're discussing here, but needless to say, we did design this hammerhead so that it all drains to a northwesterly direction and the stormwater plans that were approved by the county show a swale right up in the corner of the north, the northwest corner of that hammerhead. So we did take into account that that needs to be captured, retained, detained, treated before it goes into the wetlands to the south. Think, correct that.
Setback from the regular water, I think that was the question.
Yeah, there was a question. The shaded area is that setback.
Oh, yeah, that's the 60-foot buffer. That has not changed. We're, we're not changing any kind of buffer areas or open space.
Okay.
The original site plan submitted to the application didn't have that colored in?
It was a little confusing, I, and so I colored it in for this presentation.
So it's 40 or 60?
It's, it changes obviously, but it's roughly 60 feet, 50. I don't, I don't even know if it goes down to 50, but it's.
40 is the code minimum.
Right.
For budget, for, or maybe a budget. And the short flat's already been processed.
Yeah, the, actually, the, now it's not moving for me now, but I have a copy of the actual plat too that shows that, that area on it, which will be flatted someday. Questions?
Uh, I, this is rebuttal, so if you have anything else you want, you feel like you need to rebut?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I guess I don't have, I don't have the background with me or anything to talk about Army Corps permitting or any of that kind of stuff.
Yeah, and that's really something that should be outside of this anyway. This is just.
To that point, that, that was not a condition of the original. It, it really was not a part of that. That, that whole, that whole original project.
And from what I understand, from what I understand tonight or to this afternoon, we're just talking about these three modifications. So if they were disapproved, then we're back to the three buildings, the drain field in the north
Hard Service.
And the parking lot or the parking area against the fact it doesn't necessarily shut the project down.
Right.
Understood.
Great, thank you. Because we'll go ahead and staff need to feel like they need to mention. Go ahead and shut down public comment then, and then we'll go right into deliberation. Yeah, I, I see the benefit. I see the benefit because reducing hard surface, you're moving the subject further, further south, you still, I mean, you have everything covered. I think it's just a much better plan. Original plan, especially from an environmental standpoint. Just reducing the amount of hard surface is huge. Moves the subject further away from the shoreline, which is also huge. I don't see a problem with the modification.
Okay, so I also see the benefits of the modification other than a problem. One of the things that I think we need to be very clear on, and you just touched on it, is that we're here to either say yes to the modification or no means we go back to the original plan. It doesn't mean that this thing goes away and everything goes back to nothing. The, the original plan will still be enforced, so if we can better the original plan and I guess at the time of possibly anything else, and we will have to revisit PD then, I guess. I mean, there's, there's just nothing more than what's in front of us to decide on. We, we don't have this broad discussion about everything under.
You essentially have a dilemma. You either have, you have one or the other. You have, you have the status quo, which is the previously approved document, or you have the modification. Sounds, it sounds as though even the agency comment, comments from Yeah. Sounded as though they said that it would increase, it would mitigate, although not eliminate potential negative consequences. So increased mitigation is a value. But it can't, you know. Your, your, your choice is not between
revisiting.
Total, total mitigation or not.
I think it's a good idea. I think I've done good at making it better. And I'm sure if there's any hitches in it, you and, or engineers would be more than happy to spell that out. They always have been.
They're not shy people.
They're not very shy.
And I think, and I want to commend the developer on, I'm just, I actually, I don't know if you're doing this on purpose, but responding to some of the environmental concerns there and that's admirable. And just going forward with what you had and it would have been a, would have been a more detrimental impact than what it, what it would be with the modification. So with that, I will go and entertain a motion.
All right, I move to approve this project file MOD 0001-22. Modification of the approved file CUP 0006-20. Idaho Club North Lake PUD, finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of Bonner County Comprehensive Plan in Bonner County. Revised code is enumerated in the conclusions of law based upon the evidence submitted up to the time staff before it was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt findings, facts, and conclusions of law set forth in the staff report and direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion. Have the chairman sign and transmit to all interested parties. This action does not result in the taking of private property.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, we have motion to second. Rock all vote. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes and it is